In the order, it's a little after second. Uh, the first item is the roll call. Oh, are you the secretary?
I am. Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Connick?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Ms. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Okay, so everybody is here. The first item is, or the second item is to adopt the agenda. And there were a couple of modifications.
There was, there was one modification after it was posted, which is under old business, harmous thing update proposed, um, uh, agenda amendment by data con. So I think you should separately agree to that before you do the full agenda.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I would like to ask a point of order on that. Because I'm a little confused of why that's even an issue. You know, uh, since I've been on the board, I thought things just went on the agenda if any member wanted them on the agenda. There's really nothing in our rules that exactly say that. What, what is the procedure?
Maybe you're not just anyone.
Oh, well, that's, that's a distinct possibility that I really hadn't thought of, but, uh...
We have been doing that and changing it on the board supervisors. I would agree, that's the way it's been done in the past. I think we should probably look at updating our procedures to do that because...
Do which? Do what?
To, if there's a late amendment, you know, you have made comments about the board supervisors, and so we're changing our procedures. And so if it comes in after it's been posted, then what we do is have the board, um, just...
But, but that's my point. It didn't come in after it was posted. I, I requested that it be put on the agenda back on September the thirteenth in a letter to the chairman and the rest of the board, and I think you got copies of it. And then it just never happened. So then I began to recor- when I saw the agenda that had been posted, I asked why it hadn't been put on there because I had requested it way, like, two weeks before. So I, I just want to clarify, that's all, and ask what, well, I'll be happy to do whatever the board wants to do.
So do we have a motion to add this to the agenda?
Well, I, I'd like to get my point of order answered of what is the procedure? So I don't make the same mistake again if I made the same.
I would be glad to write new procedures and it would be my recommendation that once it gets posted and the public can see it, then at that point, if there's a change, whether it's because somebody wants something different or staff didn't do what they were supposed to do, if there is a change, that it is adopted at the board level so that everyone is clear that it wasn't on the original ju- agenda.
And I may have missed your request.
Okay. Well, I, I'm fine with that. I, the only question is, I'm, the only addition to that I would like to make is that when, before it goes on board docs, which is actually another mystery of who, how that all works, which you don't have to answer tonight, but could you circulate it to the board before it gets posted so we can then, we avoid the situation where...
We can do that.
Okay, well, let's do it.
Or what we do is send out a email to let you know it's been posted, but, um...
Well, great, I didn't, we didn't do either one, so I just happened to look.
Okay, so your point is if it's, can't be changed after it's posted, you would like to see it pre?
Oh, right.
Okay.
Isn't that fair?
That sounds pretty fair.
What do you think?
I, I think that's just...
Just a matter.
Right.
Okay, so how, okay, so are we gonna add this?
So I like to add this, which, well, I don't know, add it or, or yes, that it be put on, in fact, two, three weeks ago. So, yeah, I would like to get an update of what we talked about at the end of last month's meeting.
So are we okay with that?
Board.
So is there be an update?
It's gonna be an update from who?
Well, I guess from, we directed the, our clerk or our secretary to write him a letter and tell him that they either had to, as I recollect, to, we, we don't have any minutes exactly, so, but my recollection of what the motion that passed was to write a letter to them and tell them they either had to give up their old special use permit or if they were gonna use the property strictly as a residential property from now on to come in for, then, then to give it up, or if they were gonna continue to use it under the special use permit to answer for an amendment, oh, you're not gonna, you're gonna...
Well, what I was, no, no, what I was gonna say is you might as well just do it now instead of adding it to the agenda.
No, we need to add it to the agenda.
Oh, I see.
Do you wanna add it to the agenda?
Well, yeah, that's what I...
Okay, so, sorry.
But you're asking me what, what, what we were gonna do.
Is there a second to that?
I will second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye?
I guess I'll say aye.
Okay.
I'm gonna stay.
Okay, so we're gonna add that.
Okay.
And if we can make that fairly quick, it'd be nice.
Well, I, I'm gonna have that.
You don't have anything to say on this, okay?
Well, I don't know what the updates will be.
Okay, so, so the next thing, the next thing would be, I guess, the pardon setting update, can you?
Do you wanna do that first, or do you want to do that?
Well, it's old business. Why don't you just very quickly do that?
Um, I was asked as the BCA clerk to send a letter to Dr. Singh. And, um, that was as the BCA clerk, as the zoning administrator, I didn't feel that that was the best approach to take. I believe that there has been some issues with the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And, um, I think the raw process of the issue comes down to the wording, which Mr. Connick referred to. And this is going before the board of supervisors on October the third. But it says, once a permit or special exception has been granted, however, the use shall not be enlarged or extended. And the use in the past has been the special exception, so in this case, it would be the bedrooms. What the new interpretation seems to be is that the use is the entire structure. So what Mr. Burke and Mr. McCarthy have done for the past twenty years is to say that it's just that use. So it's not...
The, the, the use of the...
Permit, permit, bedroom? The permit, bedrooms. So, and that's the way that it has been done. And so if somebody wanted to remodel their home in the past, they were allowed to do that. And so if you decide that you want to go with the new interpretation, that's certainly not a problem. But I feel, and Mr. Burke feels, that it needs to be the board's decision to move in a different direction because that's not the way that it's been done, the board of supervisors. So really for me to make a change of something that's been done for twenty years, and I've confirmed that with Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Burke has confirmed that's the way it's been done, that it takes a change from the board of supervisors. I understand Mr. Connick's previous comment regarding, um, you know, it's, it's written there, and this is the interpretation. But again, um, I understand that it's easy to look at it and read it and see what it says, but that's not the way that it's been administered. And our concern was, is that if we made a change for Dr. Singh, there were two hundred other, um, building permits in line that would also have to be reviewed, that you can't single out just one person. We did, um, have a sign, or we do have a signed document from Dr. Singh. And this states, let me pass it down. This states that the building that she has has been reviewed and approved for residential occupancy, agreed and understood by the owner and signed by her. So we feel that if she does have a breach in this agreement, that she would be up for a violation should she extend beyond the three bedrooms that she has. So for that reason, we did not write the letter. I, I was concerned because she did build on a new addition. And I was concerned with the setbacks. And so we did stop, um, any building until it's been confirmed. And Dr. Singh paid...
She's been told what has been confirmed?
That, that she was meeting the setbacks. And, um, we also confirmed that she's sitting in the agricultural zone and not the conservation zone. And Dr. Singh paid for that survey, and I have received that. The setback is fifty feet and her building addition is at fifty-six feet. So she is within the setback requirements. So she has stopped construction on that until that has been confirmed. And per Mr. Burke, um, you cannot stop progress on the old construction of the home when there's nothing there in question. So she has stopped the progress, she is allowed to continue on because she has another setbacks. So I, I understand, uh, the community's concern. And I have put together this along with a number of other items that I have found since a short time here that I think are of question in the interpretation of the ordinance. And, uh, that'll be on board docs, and we hope to present that to the planning commission this Friday for their review and consideration, and they will make their recommendations, and they'll be provided to the board for the October third meeting. And if the board decides to move in a different direction, then, um, Mr. Burke and I are more than glad to, um, you know, do what the board directs us to do, we work at the pleasure of the board.
Of supervisors.
Supervisors.
And just gonna, tell me, which district are they in agricultural conservation?
They are, well, their, their property is split, they're in both, but the house is in the agricultural zoning section. And so they meet the setbacks, and that's been verified by our surveyor.
Okay, is there any questions?
I have a question, I'll defer to Mr. Burke.
Well, let's see if anybody else has a question.
You go ahead, Dave.
Well, okay.
My question, um, Ms. Kaiser, is, I'm, I'm a little confused. I mean, I heard what you said, uh, and I appreciate that explanation. But what I don't understand and what the basis of the motion and the vote last time was is that the very same applicant, Dr. Singh, made an application to expand the use of act, I believe in January of this year. And then it went to the planning commission, it was heard and continued and so forth a couple times, it was mended a little bit. And ultimately, the, the planning commission, uh, you know, I think unanimously, isn't that right? I think it was unanimous, voted to recommend denial of it. And then Dr. Singh came to our board the next week and, I'm not sure, I can't remember what the reasons, were some illness in the family or whatever, and asked that the, that we table it for another month, which we did, and then she withdrew it. And what's troubling to me, and I, as I recollect to Mr. Burke, is that those very same plans were then the basis for what Mr. Burke did. So, um, it, it seems like, uh, and plus there's gonna be some additional bedrooms and some additional bathrooms and the, what was originally designated as spa rooms and so forth are still there.
What's illegal with that?
What?
What's illegal with that?
Well...
It's, generally, it's being built as a residential dwell.
I, I don't know.
And until it is used for rental dwelling, it's not illegal. She can do what she wants.
Mister Chairman, you know, I wasn't finished with my question, so, yeah.
Go ahead, but I'll, I'll...
I mean, I'd like to finish my question, which is I don't understand how something that was, uh, submitted with the plans and with the site plan, uh, and then was recommended for denial by the planning commission, uh, and then was withdrawn as an application to us, can then be taken the same exact plans over to the building office and be the basis for the issuance of, of building permit without any change to the special use permit, which is what she applied for initially.
Now, I might ask one question.
I thought you were retreating.
Well, I'm just gonna ask a question.
Okay.
On this, was this done before, I mean, this was done before this point came up?
Oh, that was done at the, the day that the building plans were, um, done, the day.
So this, this is a copy of what's on the building plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It is, and I understand Mr. Connick's point. Basically, she did, um, use the same plans, but as you can see, she did agree...
Actually, I can't see, could you read it, it was, I, I can't, it's so small. I don't know, I just see the red ink.
She did agree that it would be a residence.
Reviewed and approved for res- oc- dental occupancy, agreed.
And understood.
And understood by, I don't know.
What is it, agreed and understood?
That it's a residence.
The whole thing or just the new part? That's my question.
The addition that is being added, the building plans that she put in are being built as a residence. And should they, should that change, that she has more than three bedrooms in the house, more than three visitors, then we can look at a potential violation. And I think if the board wants to change this, then I think the next...
Change which, would you?
I'm sorry, if the board wants to change the use and deem it to be the entire house and say, you can't build on, then I think there needs to be a conversation about what a homeowner can do. Because then, if you're given a special permit, then can you not remodel your house at all? Is it just a bathroom? Can you not add a deck? I think it, it restricts the homeowner from doing anything to their house at all. So if the board chooses to go that way, then I think there needs to be some clarification as to what the homeowner really can do. Because to accept this with the way it's being recommended for the new use would allow the homeowner to do nothing to their home.
Well, I, I, I would agree with you, as long as it's a deck or a garage or something. But when they're putting on a whole, how many, I forget how many are in here, but there's like five. There's several additional bedrooms, they applied for two additional ones, but then there are those spa rooms. The spa's not in there, but the spa rooms are still in the plan. So my, I, I appreciate what you're saying, and that's where the gray area comes. If it was just a deck or a new chimney, or they were gonna make existing bedrooms bigger, but there's still only gonna be three, I'd say, I would agree with you a hundred percent. But in this case, not only the plans look like something else, but the representations that the owner made at the planning commission and to this board are a hundred and eighty degrees in the other direction. So my next, that's fine, what you're gonna do, my question to you now is, how are you gonna enforce whatever's written here in red ink on the, on the plans? How do you, how do you see it happening? I mean, how would you find out if more than three people, for example, are using it? Or three bedrooms or three?
I have a feeling somebody will tell her.
Well, I don't know who that is.
I would suspect that there will be people that will tell us. So, and at that point, I would be glad to investigate.
Hey, what I was gonna suggest, David, why don't you write all of the...
I'm tired of writing, you know?
I know, but, but I, I think I never heard that.
Give me a, give me a break, give me a couple weeks off.
Could you move the recorder down here a little bit, say that?
I think we should have given that...
Why didn't you ask him to put that in there?
No, but if you would, maybe, collect your thoughts, and maybe we can put it on next month.
I, well, I think, I think the right thing to do is to...
To go through the board's...
Right, to go to the board of supervisors, they're the ones that need to look at this and make their determination.
Who's gone to the board of supervisors?
She is.
And, and this, and this document, some of the issues will be on, on board docs, it's already up there, that you can review it, and if there's other items that you think are confusing, you know, we can add those too. Now is the time to try to clarify any issues that we have. Mr. Burke and I wanna do this right.
I'd say, this isn't unusual. We work in seven, eighty different counties. All of the zoning stuff usually comes out of Fairfax and everybody's copied it and everything. But in every county that we deal in, interprets it differently. Some of them go further, some of them not quite so far. So what you have done, what, what, uh, Tom McCarthy did, is not unusual at all. Calcutta used to do the same thing. They tightened up Fallkeer County. Now you can't move a store unless you go to the zoning and everything else. So it's not unusual at all.
People are listening.
You call here?
Here.
Oh.
Right here. Okay, is that enough on this subject?
I guess so, let's, so can we, I move to table this until next one.
We were only getting an update, so there's nothing to take.
Yeah, it's not really...
There's no motions, there's nothing, it's just updates.
Yeah, why didn't you work on getting it on the agenda next one?
Well, I'm gonna request that we get another update of what the supervisors did.
Okay, okay, let's do that.
Do that now?
We'll, we'll do that.
Under old business.
How about, okay, yes.
Unfinished business.
Okay.
Thank you.
New, but thank you, I appreciate it. Um, new business. The, how do you say your name, Coontz or Tom's?
Coontz.
Coontz, tourist town. Who's here to represent?
I'm representing, my name's Taylor Odom, attorney in town, representing the Coontzes on their application. Moved to the board, just seeing the board docs that there was a supplemental application permit, uh, supplemental, uh, application that was added, um, to board docs based on some concerns that the planning commission had about...
Is this it?
Uh, yes, that's it, and it should have, um, there's a road maintenance agreement, um, easements, uh, certifications, as well as some pictures that the planning commission, uh, submitted. First of all, there was a, a concern about the road maintenance agreement. There is a, a road maintenance agreement that has been recorded in the clerk's office between, what was the statements in, which the Coontzes are bound to, um, uh, between Mr. Brown about providing maintenance for the road. And there has been, um, an informal payment, uh, process whereby, I think, the residents have paid Mr. Todd Brown for his sort of materials that he, um, has used to update the road. And it's been Mr. Brown's, he's taken upon himself to make sure that the road was, was nice and, and gravelled and paved, um, sorry, not paved, but upgraded. And another consideration, uh, concern, another concern was, um, how wide the right of way is. And we had submitted some, um, class as well as the deed that records the class.
I know, I know.
All of them.
Where does that come from, do you?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the class.
You've got, you've got...
Well, there's people here, maybe they can't see what we're talking about.
About the class.
What are, what are you up to now, the class?
They're, they, so this, these, just to go from the, in order of the, um, screen here, these are pictures of the dwelling, as well as the right of way, I'm, I'm sorry, the road. And you can see the, the grade of the, of the, of the road.
Pretty steep?
Uh, there are also some, uh, color photos that are separate documents that are easier to see on board docs as well.
We had some very nice ones in our packet.
Yes, okay, good, there we go, there's some good, good color photos there on, on board docs. Uh, this is one of them. There is some confusion as to how, how wide the right of way was and all the plans that we found, uh, that mentioned the right, and all the deeds that mentioned the right of way all specify the fifty-foot wide, uh, right of way accessing the property. Here, here's a picture of the lane here, at the end of the, of the tree lane on the right is the Coontzes' property access. And that's looking from their driveway down Quaneway towards six-ten, which is...
This one?
This one, yeah, this is looking back towards, uh, the state road.
Who's the van, is that?
Uh, that was the neighbors', and I believe that's been moved. Van is still there, yeah, so the van has been parked in the right of way, so that's something that it seemed like the neighbors are violating, that the right of way, for instance, you're not allowed to park a permanent vehicle in the, in the right of way. So everything that we found was a designated right of way, it's, it's fifty feet in width. And the other con- concern that the planning commission had, uh, they'd like to see some pictures of it, and I believe we have a number of pictures, I believe there's seven or, or eight photos on there. And the last, the last concern they had was the payment of tax, lodging taxes. And from my understanding, it was, speaking with Mrs. Kaiser, uh, commissioner of revenue, was that a, an account not created to pay taxes, um, unless there's been a permit submitted. So if there were a permit, uh, approved by the board, then they have a record of everyone who stayed there in a short term rental before they took full ownership of the property. So they have a record that they would be able to submit back taxes, um, to the commissioner of revenue to make sure they're up to speed with the taxes that would be due and owed, um, on the, on the property. And I'd be welcome to, uh, um, there, there were some other, um, restrictions that were voluntary restrictions that the Coontzes had put forward at the planning commission meeting. There were some concerns about, uh, snow and, uh, during the winter months. So they voluntarily restricted the, the, um, use of the property to not include January, February, and March, the win- the winter months, as well as no more than four separate rentals, um, per month. Separate rentals would be no, no more than four separate groups of people or individuals staying there at different times. So if they were to have, you know, one person, you know, one group stayed there one week, another group the next week, you'd have four weeks for, you'd have, uh, four, four separate rentals. Um, maybe welcome to take any questions that the, the board may have for us. And I'd be more than willing to address any sort of concerns or considerations that you think, um, we would need for this application to be approved. And in closing, we would say, um, that we, we, we hope that you approve it, and we hope that you find that all the conditions that the planning commission members have, uh, put forward have been met, as well as the, uh, general findings and the zoning ordinance that you, that need to be found or for the application to be approved.
I have a question. Um, I, I had driven up there, uh, previously, uh, last month, and knowing what's in some of those pictures, you really can't tell that it's fifty-foot wide, it's only maintained, I guess that's ten, twelve feet wide.
Right.
And with, with, with part of the, and part of the concerns were safety because two cars passing and fog and the things we have up there, just to say. Is there any thought about trying to cut the brush back, uh, so from, um, April, May until, into November, that that's cut back far enough that there is, uh, sight distance, that the individuals can see coming and going? Cause as you can see, if someone's parked right there...
Yeah.
That's a violation, but, so, but if, if at least if it was wider because they could see more because of the brush being cut back, because certainly a brush has gotta be on par that fifty-foot right of way.
Right, yes, the, the, the road itself does not, um, take up a full fifty-foot width. I believe the, the fifty-foot, um, wide right of way is a, uh, a, a general term that you put in the deed to make sure that if, if you were ever too widening, any parties who'd use that fifty-foot right of way would have the right to widen it. And certainly, any, anything that would impede, um, the, the sight distance down the road, uh, bushes and, and shrubs and that sort of thing would, would definitely cut back. And, um, any of the residents that use that right of way, that fifty-foot right of way, would have the right to, um, enforce that, that, uh, safety concern about the, the bushes and, 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 so that, in, in, in short, um, they would certainly be willing to cut back the, the bushes and the shrubs to make sure that the sight was, was clear and safer.
It's, it's the last, um, probably hundred meters.
Yeah, and it kind of, it, 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 there's a, like, it's almost a green alley, if you will, that you, you go through and as the, uh, weather gets warmer, and summer gets, um, hotter, the, the bushes do, uh, grow back a little more quickly on that section.
It looks cleaner now than it did a month ago, so that was, that's good, but still it is getting further back.
Yeah, and that might be something, now that the weather's going to change, would we think, um, that they would be able to, uh, cut back and, and have, um, a safer, uh, way of cutting that back?
That's all my questions for the moment.
Bill, do you have any question?
Yeah, I've got some questions. Could you, with reference to that plaque that is so conveniently up there on the screen, I take it this title notes of the chain of title, is that something they do prepare?
Uh, yes, there is a, uh...
Yeah, this list here, that's right after the picture of the house.
Yeah, I did some work on the chain of title, as well as we had a, um, uh, there was a title search that had been performed on the property as well, uh, when the, um, Mr. Evans and the Coontzes went into the transaction to purchase the property from, uh, the financial bank. They had a title search done to make sure that the lender was satisfied with the, with the titles as well as the right of way in order to, to loan them the money to purchase the property. And, and the lender was satisfied, and then I went back and looked at it, and it seems that the, uh, two parcels had been separated at one point, but...
Which, which, which two parcels, cause it looks to me, is there three there, or is that a power line going across?
Yeah, it looks like a power line.
Well, I can't...
Yeah, there are, there are two parcels, there's a two-point-nine-five-seven acre parcel and a five-point-five-four-eight acre parcel.
Say it again, two-point?
Two-point-nine-five-seven.
Right.
And then there is the...
That's your last page, okay.
Five-point-five-four-eight. And those should be, um, second, the last few pages are the, are the two properties.
Well, that's, I guess, my question that I'm having trouble with. Where is the two-point, where's the land space, two-point-nine-five-seven acres in relation to the five-point-five-four-eight acre tract?
So those are...
Is that?
One sits on top of the other, so the two-point-nine-five-seven acre parcel sits on top of it.
It's with them, no?
Yeah.
Control it, isn't it?
Right, they're, they're together, they're, they're, they're the same right of way services.
Wait a minute, no, wait, 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 wait. You've got one thing that says five-point-five-eight, and that's what's up there.
Right.
What about that parcel C, three-point-eight-five-eight, is that, who belongs to that?
That is...
Somebody's property.
That's your property, yes.
Two-point-nine, it's actually the three-point-eight. And that's the combined picture of the two services.
And that's the combined picture of the two surveys.
So you're on eight?
So, oh, that's the trouble I'm having, so.
It's the five-point-five plus the three-point-five.
So you're on nine points on the, over there.
So that's what's shown on the big plaque, this one.
Right.
It's one-twenty-six, that's up there, it says Corderine. That's actually the parcel C, oh, you pasted that on.
Yes, I supposed to do things when I go in the other place.
Oh, that's the cause of my confusion.
There were two separate, um, parcels, the five-point-five-four-eight and three-point-eight-five-eight.
All right.
That had been separate purchased separately and then they had been combined when, um, Ms. Higginson, um, or when Mr. McPlon bought it from Ms. Higginson, they were together at that point, nine-point-four-eight.
All right, well, that's my next question, is, are they still separate properties, are they, or are they merged? And it's really one big property, that's, if I can do.
They're, they're two separate, um.
Separate parcels.
Two separate parcels that are in, connected to themselves that are joining and that make up the nine-point-four-zero-six acres.
Okay.
It's in total.
But the, but the, but the proposed use is only on the five-point-five-four-eight acre tract, right?
It is in the acre where the, that, that tract where the house sits, correct.
Okay, and there's no improvements on the three-point-eight-five-eight?
There, you don't have a strip shed or anything, like, there's no improvements on that.
And I'm still a little unclear, can, can they sell the three-point-eight-five-eight as a separate lot or?
They could sell that as a lot and I think the village residential would allow them to actually subdivide it, um, to make their.
So it's still, it was never formally merged, they just bought it together.
Right, yeah.
It's a common ownership, but they're still separate lots.
Right, and then the deed, there's two parcels, two, two legal descriptions for each of the parcels.
That answers my first question, thank you, very helpful. Now, turning now to this Faulkner right of way agreement, which has five-twenty-two, bring five-twenty-two in the upper left-hand corner which is your, what, looks like the second deed in after the, your title, that's the, your title, uh, summary. This right of way agreement made and entered into this ninth day of January nineteen-seventy, with me?
Page eight, page eighteen, right, look.
No, this is the one that says five-twenty-two on, says mail, mail to Mr. Thomas W. Leek. Fifty-foot right of way C survey at the top, see it? Okay, we on the same page?
Fifty, yeah, five, five-two-two, yeah, five-twenty-two.
Okay, I'm reading the witness at clause, the second paragraph, and it says that for in consideration of the parties of the first part, assuming their rightful share of, of the expenses of maintenance and upkeep incurred in preparing for takeover by the Commonwealth of Virginia of the road known as Quan Lane, that part's underlined. You see that?
Right, yeah.
So, but the Commonwealth of Virginia never did take it over, did that?
Right, never, never took it over, I believe there was some dispute back in the, in that time when that deed was being entered into. Um, there was some, uh, uh, thought that the, the, the DOD was going to take over the road, Quan Lane, um, but it never did subsequent to that. Um, and now it's, it's always been a private lane and it's a, it's a private lane. Cause I, I believe the whole, um, tract used to be one, it was a big Faulkner tract, it was part of the Faulkner estate. Um, and then it had been subdivided subsequently and each, each subdivision, um, used that, that private road, that Quan Lane, which was probably the original farm road at some point.
Okay, so my next question is, you've got that right of way agreement, can you show on that plaque or some other one, which part of the, is that just for Quan Lane?
That is for Quan Lane, that's correct, um, and that very.
What I mean, does it end at their property line?
Uh, no, it, Quan Lane ends before their property line.
Okay, that, that part I understand, but in other words, this right of way.
Yeah.
If, that's the same thing, right?
Right.
Okay, then my next question is, the next deed of easement, it talks about a fifty-foot right of way and, uh, it's from nineteen-ninety-one. And so is that for the same road or is that for a different road or a different part of the road or what?
That's for the, that's for the part of the road that is technically not known as Quan Lane, there was some confusion, um.
Yeah, and I've got it now.
Yeah, I, I, I did too, the, the Crissman property, uh, there was some confusion as to where the road ended. Um, and so that, that deed was entered into to clear that confusion.
Is that what goes down to the left?
Uh, that's what's, if you're, that green alleyway of trees that we looked at, before you get to the gate where the Coons has the property, before you get to that, the Quan Lane technically ends, what's known as the private drive, Quan Lane, and you go over this, what had been the, um, uh, let's see, so it's Crissman, it's a Crissman property.
But is that where it lappercakes and goes into their property?
Right, it goes, it goes up to the right and before it goes up to the right to their property, Quan Lane ends and there's about, um, fifty feet or so, where in this Crissman deed, they clarify that when Quan Lane ends up to the Coons' property, that, that would also be fifty-foot wide right of way, so to make sure there was no gap.
Is the van on Quan Lane or on this right?
Um, it is in Quan. Yeah, so, so in that, in that picture, there is, that right of way is fifty feet from, from, from where you're standing to the Coons' property. But Quan Lane technically ends and then that's what this deed of easement was done, was to clarify that, to make sure there was no, into Quan Lane and then there was no right of way to actually go another ten, twenty feet to get to the Coons'.
So Quan Lane is fifty feet.
Quan Lane is fifty feet and then this right of way in this, um, book one eighty-five, page eight-nineteen.
That's, that's, all right, I'm just piecing this together now.
Yeah, so that's, that's why in this two-point.
Right here.
So that's why in this two-point-nine-five-eight-seven, two-point-nine-five-seven acre parcel, there's this fifty-foot right of way C T book, ninety-six, page five-twenty-two.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, oh, that's this little, okay, gotcha, uh-huh.
Yeah, man, come toward, yeah, I think you can see there, sure.
It's that little box there.
Right, that little box, that, that was the.
So that's the right of way for that one piece?
Right, that was the, the.
All right, great.
Confusion back in the day, but.
All right, now, my, my next question is, this thing that's up on the screen with the dotted line that says outlet road and telephone pedestal by it, that goes meandering all the way back there to the corner with Ingersoll, what, or goes back that way, is that still there? I mean, that's a nineteen, looks to me like a nineteen-fifty-three, I mean, maybe I'm, I'm, this William Gimbel plaque, I don't know, that's a combination, but what we've got, this is William Gimbel plaque, which I, no, it's nineteen-ninety-one, sorry. Looks like it says printed April twenty-nine, nineteen-fifty-two, but that can't be right.
Yeah, so that's what, this is.
Might be nineteen, I don't know, but anyway, over here on the left-hand side, it says Rod, Platte Show and Boundary Survey portion of Roger Elcordani and L, you with me? That big one-twenty-six line up there.
Right, yeah.
All right, that, that dotted line that goes back there, is that an access road to one of these other properties behind this room?
It is, it is not, it had been in the past, um, this is the, this is the larger plaque, I didn't put it in the packet, this is the Faulkner estate. And so that outlet road runs across the Coons' property down this way from Quan Lane and then it goes back up to the Mahoney property here, connects to the Mahoney property and then goes back, all the way back up to get back to six-ten. So it was a big circle that goes around like that and you could have taken it back from Faulkner's and then you could have gone from six-ten all through that property around serviced, you know, whatever you have back there, whatever farm equipment or, or livestock and then goes back up all the way to six-ten. So it was a way for the original landowner to get through and it probably had been using in the past informally, but there's no legal right of way for someone to come from six-ten that way through the property back up Coons' to Quan Lane, they don't have the right to do that.
They don't?
That outlet road.
I mean, that outlet road was never deed of anybody, is what you're saying.
I couldn't find it on this, uh, this parcel, I couldn't find any right of way. It would have been an exception in the type of policy when the Deutsche Bank, when, when the original purchaser bought from Deutsche Bank and that easement was not on there.
Oh, you're saying Deutsche Bank never makes mistakes?
When the, when the purchaser bought it from Deutsche Bank, that, that type of policy, right.
So, but what, that was, I mean, my main question is, is there anybody else back there that's going to use that?
Yeah.
They have the way to go out the other way.
Right, and they would be able to exclude it and they would try and bring up some.
All right, all right, that, that's all, all the questions I had about, about this stuff.
Okay.
About the deeds and whatever, thank you very much, you've been very helpful and helped me clear that up.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know, they, they never said anything last time, did they? African's gonna say anything?
Okay, well, I'll have to swear, you in?
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
I do.
It's the one board where they only swear people, not lawyer.
And you can identify yourself just for the.
Julie Coons, Wakefield District, um, so we, we really heard a lot of our neighbors' concerns. We spent a lot of effort over the past month going to talk to every neighbor exhaustively on Quan Lane, what you have signed in front of you, um, besides the Atkins and Mullies, it's signatures from everybody on Quan Lane. So we basically had eighty percent approved for everybody on the road, um, and zero percent, um, have zero issues with the road cost. Um, and we, I, I noted last time that in the planning commission, that we took exception to the statements that we were absentee owners, um, and that, um, that we, we literally one counted away, um, this forty minutes door to door. So we're, we're very much aware of what's going on there, um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
I, I have a question, did, did, did Mr. Leek or the Atkinses or the Leeks that were here last time or any of those other people, have they indicated in any way that they're, and now withdrawn their objection?
We've spoken with Ms. Raggins, but he's very indifferent and Mr. Leek, we haven't.
I, I didn't ask if, I asked if they withdrawn their objection or not in the writing.
They had not, but I would like to add that the van that we keep talking about is the Leek's property and all the cars, none of that is the Leek's, so people raising concerns on the road, that's the people who have the car violation.
Keep some, keep some open speaking.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna open the public hearing, is it anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this application? I guess in the back, do you identify yourself?
Sure, um, I'm Mary Brack.
Are you testifying about this application?
Yes.
Yes, well, I'll swear, you in?
No, I'm not testifying, I'm just reading on. Said the same name?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, now, identify yourself.
So my, my name is Mary Brack and I'm in the Wakefield District and I just wanted to remind the board that this application is very similar to the Dog Tourist Home in, um, in Brown Hollow Road and, um, I just wanted to remind you that you did deny that who's almost exactly the same situation. It was a tourist home on a small acreage, um, on a very, very small road in a farming community and nobody, none of the surrounding, um, landowners was in favor of it. So I just wanted to.
Okay, thank you. Is it anybody else? Okay, Diane, is this about this application?
Of course. That's what this open thing is, isn't it?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I just think if, if we are trying to encourage tourism and this is a source of income, uh, if this is a permitted use in the stone, uh, that there's really, and if we met all the, uh, essential requirements, I can't imagine any reason to deny it, um, because it's a good way. We, uh, our comprehensive plan encourages tourism, this is a good way to have people come here, spend their money here, um, not just whatever they spend for these people, but going around to the vineyards or the artist galleries or whatever, and restaurants. So I would encourage you to consider approving it, I was here at the planning commission meeting last week and I think there were, uh, there was one provision that was added as it came recommended to you that something could do with a railing on a deck or something like that. So I presume that's part of, of the, of the. So now I'd recommend approving.
Okay, thank you. Is it anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do we have, uh, any discussion or question?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow this, uh, permit to go forward for the Bob and Julie Coons' condition of building inspection and compliance with whatever recommendations are there for safety. Um, the, for rentals, transactions per month, no revenues between January and March. And that there is, uh, they continue on with the right of way agreement and that they do something to widen the amount of sight visit, sight distance, sight distance when it comes to pushing back the brush, the, the shrubs, whatever you saw, because it's still not a great distance with, and no, uh, from, uh, experience here in the county, as well as, um, what the individual said last month, that there's, um, a lot of fault and we need to make sure of that safety point. So with adding the condition that they really do approve that, um, I make, make that a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a point of order.
Hold on, is there a second?
I, I'm making a point of order.
We'll wait till I do one second.
A second?
To her motion.
Uh, I, I will second it.
Okay. Would you like to say something?
I want to make a point of order and I think that before the motion is in order, uh, you have, we, the board has to go through the standards in section one-seventy dash fifty-two, one at a time, the ones that are applicable before a motion to approve it or disprove it, disapprove it is, well, is appropriate. I think we have to go through the findings and then if the findings are all made, then the motion to approve it will put out a condition if anybody wants to make us, with respect to any of those particular conditions, it would be in order.
Can I make an observation?
Sure.
Sometimes, sometimes, okay, sometimes the conditions that are placed on enable one to make the findings.
Well, of course they do, but I think we ought to do the conditions.
You wouldn't do the findings first, you would wait till you have a motion, that's my opinion.
Okay.
But anyway, we have a motion and a second.
So can we go through the findings?
Would you like to read them, please?
Sure. At least the ones that I think are applicable, I'm reading from section one-seventy dash fifty-two of the ordinance. And, uh, the first condition is that the proposed use shall be such that it will not adversely affect the use or development of neighboring properties and shall be in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. The location, size and height of the building structures and walls and so forth, I don't need to worry about that because, uh, it's already built. Uh, but the, but the one thing is, will, will the proposed use be such that will not adversely affect the use or development of the neighboring property?
Can we make that finding?
Well, firstly, I have taken into consideration only what we heard tonight, but, uh, what we heard from the neighbors at the last meeting. And, uh, the two neighbors who were closest to this, uh, felt that it was very un, it was gonna be traffic that was very unsafe, uh, and because of people who are unfamiliar with the road and conditions up there and also it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood in the sense that it was not gonna be a residential use anymore but a quasi-commercial use. And, uh, so based on what's in the zoning ordinance, which the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to protect, the number one purpose of our zoning ordinance in section two or three of the zoning ordinance is to protect the character of the neighborhood. And my feeling is that this would change the character of the neighborhood because it's not gonna be full-time residential use, instead it's gonna be a commercial use. And, uh, so I, I would, I would, I would make, I would not be able to make that finding.
Okay. And I might add one condition that we might think of, that they clearly mark where their driveway is with some type of sign.
Only can get that when you go to the traffic.
Okay, well, I'm thinking safely.
Well, that's a next one.
Okay, okay, well, I'm thinking.
So we have to find everybody, how, very fast, just find.
On A, right, one-fifty-two A.
Are we, are we okay with that, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a finding, I can make a finding.
I can make a finding. You make a finding, well.
I want to abstain on that, I, I didn't, you know, I, as much as that pains me, I had some agreement with Mr. Carter on this, I live on the right of way myself.
Okay. Okay, okay. And I do not. That's fair enough, okay. Mr. Conant, I take it you cannot?
I cannot.
Okay, what's the next?
The next one is the proposed use shall be that pedestrian vehicular traffic generated will not be hazardous or in conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and on streets serving a site.
Have you been up there?
No, I have not. But I would like to say in that regard, the thing that I passed out last month to y'all of the zoning ordinance calls for a, I'm gonna find the section for you. Uh, section one seventy dash one twenty-four, minimum standards and requirements for this kind of a use says driveways and service roads.
What kind, what kind of use?
What, for this kind of...
You said this kind of use, where does it say that?
Well, it's anything that needs a site plan or development plan that where there's an, anything that says, "No zoning permits for any use for which an X appears in the site plan column of Article Four shall be issued unless and until a site plan shall then submit and approve in accordance with this article." So, if you wanna go back to Article Four of your ordinance, that's the chart.
Why don't we go back there?
All right, that's section one thirty-six.
If the chart goes to uses.
I think it's the section thirty-six. And this is, what is this under, Mr. Conant?
Tourist home.
But I mean, what's the, commercial or recreation or what is...
What's...
Here, 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 here. I'm treating...
No, no, it didn't, it didn't. David?
Yeah.
Who was the first, first one you quoted?
What section?
Yeah.
One, one, I don't know, I'm prepared. So, just one section, trying to find where, what is it?
Tourist home.
I'm used to looking at it in the book, I'm used to looking at it. Well, where's that in the book? This one, where is that? How about, how about you, counsel? What section is this under?
What was, I'm sorry, what's the question?
What section is this under in the use of...
There's the sort of spreadsheet of uses.
Right, it would be under residential lodging uses.
What, what subsection, A?
Um, I don't have that subsection, but I have a...
Residential.
That's not, no, it's not.
Family apartment with...
Residential lodging uses, tourist home, boarding house.
Where? What, what's the, what's the letter?
Um, I don't have that letter. I have it where it mentions it, other apartment. Don't you see, I have Ms. Hazard's sheet, you know, it references about that sheet.
No, I'm wanting, here, right here. So, it doesn't have a chart.
No, it's not here.
One seventy dash thirty-six E.
Thirty-six E, that's what I thought, E.
Additional standards, one seventy dash sixty-five.
No, we're not, we're not for the additional standards yet. We're trying to find it under E. Office, eating and on, here we go, it's so close.
Boarding house, tourist home.
There we go, tourist home, thank you. Bed and breakfast, SP, 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 and so forth. And there's, there's an X in the column, so that's step one. Now, back to Mr. Anderson's question. Okay, it's one... Anyway...
You said for this use.
Well, this, it says for this kind of use, yeah, "Development or use requiring site development plan is section one twenty-one."
Okay, so what is it saying?
"No zoning permit for any use for which an X appears in the site plan column of Article Four," that's this, "shall be issued unless and until a site plan is submitted and approved in accordance with provisions of this article." And section one twenty-four, minimum standards and requirements, F one, says the pavement of vehicular travel lanes or driveways designated to permit vehicular traffic on the site to and from adjacent property and parking areas shall not be less than twenty feet in width. And the testimony that has been controverted tonight from all the neighbors was that at its widest point, this road was only about eight or nine or maybe in some spots twelve feet wide from side to side. And so, I don't think that it meets that standard. And since it, that, that goes to that finding and it also goes to the finding about the, not only the traffic, but the conformity with the ordinance.
Now, why is that dark?
I did that just so I could see. What, you mean, I just shaded it in?
Yeah, should be in the ordinance.
One twenty-four?
One seventy dash one twenty-four.
One seventy dash what?
One twenty-four.
One twenty-one, that's part, what I read?
No, one twenty-four.
All right, well, that's one that says it has to be in there. One twenty-three, preparation, submission, procedure, items to be shown. One twenty-four, minimum standards, F one. The pavement has to be twenty feet in width. And while the...
On the site and to and from adjacent property.
Well, right, well, to and from, out to the state road is not a twenty-foot driveway. It's a twelve-foot driveway max. Some places, they said it was only eight or nine feet. And that's what the neighbors testified. And we don't have any testimony otherwise. And so, it's not just the right-of-way. You know, there was some talk earlier about right-of-way and the parking and all that. Just for the people who aren't lawyers here, the right-of-way is those lines on a plat that show where the road can go, anywhere within the right-of-way. Excuse me, can I finish?
No, I take you may be reading this incorrectly.
Let me finish what I'm saying.
This is for a subdivision, not for a...
No, it's not for a subdivision.
It is for a subdivision.
No, it's not.
Development or use...
But that's one twenty-one. I'm reading one twenty-four.
I understand.
One, is it one twenty-four what I just read? It says anything that requires a site plan, development or use requiring site development plan.
It says shall not be required for the repair, rehab of an existing structure.
But it's not a rehab.
It is an existing structure.
But it's not being, that's not the point. It says use is a special use permit. So, look, you can read, and I'm just saying, that's what it requires, a twenty-foot road. And there's a reason for it. This is a commercial use. We just looked it up in the charter. It's not a residential use. It's not a tourist use. It's a commercial use. And a commercial use requires those standards to be met. And the reason is, just like the disaster that we have at Harmony Manor or the disaster there was gonna be if the other thing over on Christmas Tree Lane was approved, it's not an adequate road for this kind of use. And that was the testimony of all those neighbors. They talked about how dangerous it was and, I mean, you know, it's unfortunate they're not here tonight, but I don't see, I mean, I hope that you all recall what they said and they testified last time so they wouldn't have to come here again tonight. But nevertheless, that's a dangerous place. And...
You've not been up there though.
No, I haven't been up there, but...
Well, I was up there today in the fog and I was surprised at how broad and good the road was. The surface was, I would say, somewhere between ninety-five and a hundred percent. No potholes, no ruts, no nothing. The width was such that two cars could very easily pass. The only part of the road that seemed narrow was where the van was parked on the neighbor's property, which probably impinged some on the road, not enough that you couldn't get by, but it did impinge some. And I, I feel that in this particular situation, the neighbors were the ones who had driven over the edge of the road and injured themselves and the child on the bicycle. And these are the people who think that they are so experienced and careful that nobody else should be able to drive on it. This seems to stretch credulity for me because at this point, nobody who, anybody who doesn't live on that road is deemed unqualified to drive on it. And that isn't the case. That, that would be the same to say that none of the people on that road could have guests or friends or family drive on that road because it was incapable and dangerous to do so.
I found something in here.
Won't you let him finish?
Well, hold on, this, this might make a difference. It says, "In addition, with the concurrence of the planning commission, the ZA may waive any or all requirements, including submission requirements, when in the judgment of the commission and the ZA's requirements are not necessary to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizen." So, that can be waived.
It could be waived, but it wasn't waived.
Well, it was because they recommended approval.
No, the plant, the site plan happens after we approve it. They have to go back to the planning commission with their site plan after we approve it.
Okay, well, that's approved of then.
Mr. Chair, when you go to the beginning of Article fifteen, fourteen, it says site plan, it's the intent of this article, and it's about one twenty-one, one twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, et cetera, again, that the intent of this article is to ensure compliance with the applicable ordinance established to encourage innovative and grand design to use the most advantageous techniques in the development of the land in the county to ensure efficient use of the road in high standards in the layout, design, landscape, construction, of development. So, the articles that we've just been going through are for newly created sub-plans. This one has been in existence. Mr. Owens has talked about it being a farm for a long time and then various roads were, were developed as farm roads and so on. It seems that the intent of the neighbors has that, that they would have safety, that they have been able to maintain it and have a more formal agreement on maintaining it. It is ten to twelve foot wide. You can always, no one would fit on those like that in Rappahannock County. And I believe that they would aggressively keep the shrubs back, that that would make the intent of a country road in Rappahannock County. So, I believe this is Article fourteen is about the new development, new design, new construction.
The only question I have is, we're trying, discussing something about a site plan and as far as I'm concerned, I don't see any need of a site plan here. The building is built, the road is there, nothing has changed. And that I, I think, as, as Dr. Matthews said, what the site plan and that business is about new construction and particularly development. And that just doesn't seem applicable here.
So, can we make this finding?
So, so the finding about the pedestrian vehicular traffic?
Traffic, right, vehicles.
I can find that I don't think that it is dangerous or a problem.
David?
No.
I can make the finding.
I can make the finding with, as I had said...
With the restrictions.
With the restrictions of, of keeping that brush to the path.
So, they don't, I'm just trying to abstain, abstain, okay. Okay, what's the next one?
Uh, adequate utility, training, parking, loading, and so forth. I don't think that's really an issue here.
So, we can all make that finding?
I can make that. Signs, I, I don't know, there was something in the original application we needed to discuss it. I didn't hear anything about it, so I guess...
No, I'm recommending that that be added, just that a sign mark the entrance so that people aren't turning the wrong way, basically. Clearly.
"The future impact of a proposed use shall be considered," this is E, "and addressed in establishing a time limit on the permit. Existing and recent development, current zoning and comprehensive plan shall be among the factors used in assessing the future impact of a proposed use and whether reconsideration of the permit after a stated period of time will be necessary and appropriate for the protection of properties in the vicinity and ensure implementation of a comprehensive plan." I would like to suggest that we do two things. Or if you wanna prove it, I don't know, but I mean, two conditions. One is that it only be limited to these people, these applicants, that if they, if there's a change of ownership, then that whoever the new owners would be would have to come back and reapply. And second of all, that we review this, as we've done with a lot of other permits, I think in a year, because there were a lot of neighbors here, I think there were ten or twelve people here last time that were very concerned about it. And I don't see any harm in having them come back after one year and review it. And maybe the neighbors will be happy and withdraw whatever attraction they had and say they were all wrong and they were concerned for nothing.
So, if we include that, you'll vote for it?
I didn't say that.
Okay. Okay. Is there any...
I might.
Is it any thoughts?
That's, that's something that we have done in the past for some commercial antique shops and a few other things. Rather than we would review the permits in two, one year, two years. So, I think that's quite appropriate and then there's the neighbor's opportunity to write in or come by and let us know. So, and that I do believe...
So, you'd like that?
I do like that and I, I like the idea that, that the permit would expire, would go away...
Term, right?
When the, when they sell the property. But it's just to these property owners.
Okay, with that, with the two conditions, I can make that finding.
But you can't make the other ones, right?
It's passed then.
I would like to make a comment on the first indication about how that one seventy fifty-two A. You know, that adversely affects is such a, what a term. I don't see how anybody would ever...
Be able to meet it.
That's true. I mean, it's just, what's adverse to them? That could mean anything to anybody. So, I'm like, that's the kind that I, I mean, it's in there, so you have to go with it. But I mean, if you use that, that's a... Well, in my opinion, you would compare it to what the use is now and what is significantly different. You had the traffic, of course, and personnel.
The mere fact that the people own the property, if they started using it regularly, that's adversely affecting it because the people aren't used to it or live there. So, it's kind of absurdly insane.
Well, I guess it depends on what the proposed use is. You might be right in this case, you might not in some other circumstances.
I don't see how, whatever.
Anyway, we already hooked it on that. Do you wanna reconsider it?
No, we don't have to. So, is it anything else you want to...
After...
Did everybody, you didn't get everybody on one fifty-two?
Well, I don't know if we're agreeing to his...
I, I, I can make the finding if it's about...
A two-year, can we make it two years?
A two years.
Why do?
Because they're not to be up and running.
They're already up and running. They've been coming for six months.
Take it all down.
What?
Take it all down for your...
Yes. No, they're, it takes a business a while. Problems come up, two years, it's fine.
And they, they'll be silent, they won't be able to do anything January, February, March, and what is that, food, they're coming, they're coming up there.
Before we know it and nobody will have had a complaint and we can do that.
How about split the dividend? Two kings of them.
I mean, I would vote two years. I think that's...
Two years is good, that's what we've, that's what we're...
That's what we've done before, so, and we're, we're creatures of habit. Um, is it anything else?
Are you on board with that?
Two years.
I'm happy with two years.
Two years and it terminates if it changes ownership. All right, I can make, I'll make that.
Well, on the termination of change of ownership, could they just, could the new owner just come forward? Because I don't know if we've ever done that before.
No.
The termination of ownership.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But I don't know about the direct, but on other, other, um, commercial uses, we have, it terminates with that.
And how is it owned?
May I have a question? May I, may I ask a more question? For the, just to clarify, on the two year, uh, permits, that would be a two year permit, that would review if there were.
Come back for review.
No, it would be a review, so that if there are other problems, maybe we'd need to add a condition or two or something.
Or if you were in violation, they were in violation of something, like if they rented it too often or whatever.
So then it would be deified, uh, well, they would just come up for, for renewal.
Right. Well, it's not really, it's not a.
Sorry, sorry, for review, and then they would, if there were any concerns or complaints, they would be addressed at that review board.
Right, like the Castleton Festival did that, and they came, wasn't our board, but came to play.
Just wanna make sure we're not having to submit a new application.
No.
I think you're just listing if there's any problems.
And I, I don't think, well, they, they wouldn't have to pay, it'd be part of this file would be left open.
And it, would it happen, would there be any, uh, patients if there were no complaints or concerns?
I think it would be open for the hearing, just.
Yeah, it would be open for the hearing.
There would be a, it would be on the agenda as an item.
Right, and the neighbors would be notified, and if they had comments or concerns, maybe they'll all come in and say, it's great. Way better than having somebody live in there, teenagers speeding up and down the road.
So you're liking.
No, I don't agree with that, but we might. All right, F, we, uh, the proposed use shall be such quality and surface and groundwater quality and so forth, it won't be degraded and depleted, and I don't think that's an issue here, um, I think we can make that fine.
Yes, okay.
All right, G, you, okay, my question?
Yes.
G, the proposed use will not result in unsafe conditions in relating, in relation to community facilities existing or planned as relates to adequate police and fire protection and danger and congestion in travel and rescue services.
I don't think that's a problem. Yeah, well.
Do you can find that?
Yeah.
I say no, for the same reasons as before. The road's not.
Okay, go ahead.
H, the proposed use will not cause an undue impact on the sanitary landfill and solid waste transfer collection. I, I, that's fine.
Depends on how many K M's there is. Okay, yes, I, I think it's fine, then. Okay.
Yes, I am.
I, the proposed use will not cause an undue impact on historic or scenic qualities of the immediate area. I don't think there's any issue about that. J, mm, J, the proposed special exception will not be detrimental to the implementation of the adopted comprehensive plan, including the goals, it's hard to read when you're taking up age for me.
Confide therein.
I'm thinking this is not a special exception, but anyway, that's.
They're all, they're interchangeable terms, when it comes here, it's a special exception.
Okay, it's a special exception.
All right, I, uh, I have to say that I, uh, I disagree with those who say that just because one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to promote tourism, there's a lot of other, uh, goals.
I don't think any of us said that.
What?
None of us said that.
Well, I'm not necessarily speaking to you, I'm speaking to some people who testified and what I heard at the planning commission, um, which I also attended, and, uh, uh, I think that, uh, that this spread, and as Mr. Whitson so eloquently said at the last meeting, um, I, I think it's a mistake to allow these tourist homes and bed and breakfast type operations to spread willy-nilly all over the county in the agriculture and conservation zones, I think it's a mistake.
And they should take them out of the zoning ordinance.
Well, there's permitted by special use permit, subject to a finding that it's not going to adversely affect it. And I think it does adversely affect things when it's in an area like this, that is a residential area and an agriculture type of zone, conservation type of zone, a lot of people around, I think it should be, these kind of uses should be in villages and places where there's adequate, uh, transportation and road facilities and so forth. And when it's in an isolated area like this is, I think that violates the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and in a sense that no one else agrees with that.
No, actually, Mr. Collins, I hate to say it, but you.
I don't know, why are you cursing it with, I hate to say it?
I hate to be on your side.
But what you say is something that I do agree, but you have unfortunate, unfortunately, it is permissible. Like I said before, I live on the right way, and I certainly wouldn't want it on my road, and I would fight, so. But it is permitted, and I don't see anything that we've discussed here, other, I mean, that, that's a really broad term, like I specified, and, and I don't see anything that doesn't commit it, but I think it should be some change in the laws, I think it'll be on state named in a road, uh, or like they, they said, on, uh, what'd you say, village or something that, that?
Well.
That is in, yeah, the, okay.
Wait a minute, Phil, I, I just want to say, principle seven, policy three of the comprehensive plan, uh, specifically, it says, the, the principle of our comprehensive plan is promote only economic growth that assists in maintaining our existing balance and is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character and does not effectively adversely, I'm sorry, affect active farm operations, forestry operations, residential neighborhoods, the tourist industry and the county's fiscal stability. And policy number three under principle seven says, direct, commercial and non-agricultural industry and business into existing commercial centers for designated growth areas, of which Chester Gap, at least this area of Chester Gap, is not.
But David, if you took that for beta, you wouldn't be able to put them anywhere.
Well, no, you could put them in the villages.
No, you don't say that, you said, in, 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 in private, there's.
Says direct, commercial.
Wouldn't be able to put them anywhere.
Well.
And I, and I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Well, that's.
But I do agree, I, I don't see that anything is here that would mandate these people from having it. But I agree with David, I think there would be maybe look at it, some, some, uh, yes, some hot value of all these.
Okay, well, anyway, I can make that finding.
Okay, so we've gone through all the five.
Well, that's the general ones, now we have to go through the other. Sixty what?
Okay, but I think David.
J, he was a no, you weren't a.
I'm sorry.
On J, you were a no, and he was a no, the last one.
That's correct.
The initial stage for tourist homes, bed and breakfasts, um, begins with F and K, such a use.
Sixty what is, sixty, what's the number?
It is, um, sixty six.
Sixty six?
Sixty six, and then it's A.
Okay. Okay, uh, such a use shall provide accommodations for not more than twel- well, that's, uh-huh, this is not a boarding home.
See, that's a bed and breakfast.
This is not a bed and breakfast.
No, it says tourist home.
Oh, sorry, right, okay. Uh, no accommodation for not more than twelve persons, so in six rooms, and I think there's no issue about that. I can make that finding.
I think we can make all of these fine.
Off street parking, so forth, I think I've plenty of parking, so I can make that one. Hello?
Can we just do, is in bulk?
I think we should, we only have three more to go.
Okay, we'll do.
Residential and resource preservation districts, we don't, what, what's the zoning on this, agriculture or?
Uh, village residential.
Doesn't matter, because it's just the appearance of a single family.
Okay, great, so that's not applicable. In A and C zones, it's not applicable. Five, bed and breakfast tourist homes and boarding houses shall be authorized to serve needs only in the number, oh, meals, sorry, only in the numbers equivalent to the approved number, there's not going to be any meals, so that's not applicable. And six, private road serving tourist homes, bed and breakfast shall have rights of way at least fifty feet in width.
Or the V Z.
Or, the V Z, I can find it, but, I mean, we've already been over that, so, I can.
So.
In that one, I mean, I, I don't, uh, see that there's, the way that's written.
Okay.
It's governed by something else.
So all of those findings?
Yes.
I've been, I've been all those findings.
All in favor?
Of what?
Of the motion that Jennifer made.
Well, what are, could you restate what the modifications and conditions are for the town? Or do we do all?
Yes, Secretary will agree with it. The condition of the building inspection, compliance with building code and approval, no rentals January through March, four rental transactions per month, no more than four, clean brush on the right of way at their entrance, and then signage to the property.
And then it expires.
Expires with their, with theirs.
And on review in two years. Did we get all the?
Termined.
Expiates? If, when they sell.
When they sell.
Terminates, it should say, not expired, sorry.
Terminates.
Okay, thank you for helping, Ms. Craft, though. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
No.
I can't make two of the findings, so I have to vote no.
Okay.
Or three of the findings, or something.
Thank you.
Now what?
Now, I thought you had.
Oh, well, that's, I don't know, so, why don't we do this, because we're trying to.
You want to take your.
We don't, where are our minutes from here? Well, what, you, what, I can do whatever the board wants, there's mine, you can have any changes or whatever, let me know.
Why don't we just table it?
Yeah, table, I'm gonna do them all at one time, so I'll send mine to you, or I've already done that, and you can incorporate and make one big bunch, I don't know how you want to do that, because part of it, you weren't the secretary, so, maybe that section, all. Well, I've already done it, but I mean, I don't know how you exactly want to do it.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do, separately or together.
Oh, it's not, we're just, yeah.
I'm, I'm with them, and I don't have any.
Now, do we have the signs on?
Don't leave us.
Yeah, it's just gonna be.
Just getting it, what's else, is there something else on, draft, but that way, I don't know, get that all there.
Yeah, it's A F T, it's, uh.
How's that?
Doctor Fat, looking at that going like.
That asked me, yeah.
Did you see that?
I don't know, I don't know who did that, must have been Candy.
Do you have?
All those do.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
I think that's it.
I move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we were gonna sign this. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
I did want to ask.